All right, we'll bring this meeting to order.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is the county commissioners' scheduled budget work session number two. So tonight, we have the Departments of Parks and Recreation, which includes the enterprise accounts for the airport, the golf course, and public landings, followed by Department of Public Works and the Sanitary District. They'll be in a little bit later this evening. So first up, we have Parks and Recreation, and their team is here. Director Chanley, I think, is going to give a brief overview of the department, and then we'll go through the book and look at the detailed expenses and revenues for all the various divisions in Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
Steve?
All right, the Department of Parks and Recreation is made up of five divisions. It's made of parks, which is Mike Watson is Chief of Operations, our golf course with Eric Bouffet, recreation with James Miller, with the airport with Linda Steiner, and with public landings, James, James Wood. And then I also have our fiscal administrator, Breann here, and our project manager, Veril Eisbauer, to represent us. So basically encompassing all that, you know, we're responsible for about 3,100 acres, not only just the parkland, but we also are responsible for the Board of Education property from the curbside all the way up to the building, which a lot of people are unaware of that. And I think it's an important thing to know. So when people think of parks, you know, it's just not the fields and the playgrounds that they see. You know, there's a whole nother aspect of our job that, you know, that we're responsible for. And with that, with the Board of Education, there's 16 school sites total and an additional 320 acres that we're responsible for. Our Parks Division is responsible for 22 county parks, 10 natural resource areas. Public Landings Division maintains 18 landings, two fishing piers, and three marinas. And again, you know, as I said, the golf course and 18 whole golf courses and the airport as well. So we've got a well-rounded department. We've kind of touched a little bit of everything, you know, as we talked about in our budget overview. The last line we say, you know, these five divisions provide boundless public recreation opportunities by air, land, and water. So we touch everything that people see. So, you know, we have, I think, a major imprint on what the county puts out to the public. And also, when people come over and whether they're, you know, doing public recreation or they're participating in our activities, you know, we are a good face for the county. And then I think it's important that we continue to maintain what we've been able to do the last several years. And again, that goes with your all's support. We've been able to do a lot of good projects, improve a lot of our old amenities, you know, bringing them back up and bringing people into the county. So again, I'm hoping we can go ahead and continue along those same lines. So, thank you.
I think it's safe to say that the product that you provide our citizens in Quinian's County is something that's very tangible. They can say, wow, this is awesome. Here's our tax dollars at work. Whereas some other departments, they just kind of operate from behind the scenes, and the citizens actually don't really get to physically be involved in it. So, and the commitment that these commissioners have made over the years to improve some of our parks and our landings and some of our ballfields. I think, I know me personally, we get resounding applause for the dugouts at all our baseball fields. I mean, that's just the beginning. You know, the rink that we did, the pickleball courts, I mean, we got folks going crazy for court time. So it's, again, it's a service that we provide that people can actually use and see every single day.
And again, one last thing I'd like to say is, you know, again, you know, we appreciate the faith that you have in us, you know, in coming up with some of the new things. Like, we have the county's first owned footsall court, you know, first time we've gotten that amenity into in our park system. You know, it's another aspect of soccer. It's something that's coming onboard. And again, you guys, you know, had faith and believing in us that, you know, it was the right thing to do. And, you know, we've been fortunate enough, as soon as those projects are completed, you know, we've got people knocking on the door and jumping right on that court. So, you know, again, it goes with having the support and being able to do so. And, you know, with these folks here, you know, completing those tasks and coming up with those ideas. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, well, we can go ahead and dive into the Parks section of the book, the binder here in front of you. And I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Rank, our Director of Budget and Funding. So there's a, should be a Parks tab in your binders. I think the first page is...
Start on, yep, page 33.
Page 33, okay.
As we go through this, please feel free to jump in with any questions, and we'll do our best to answer them. This first page is a departmental summary of expenses. That's a roll-up of all five of the Parks divisions. First, for Parks, in the far right column is their total request of 5.2 million, up over, a little over 5 million last, this current year. That includes the Board of Ed groundskeeping work that they do. The next division is Recreation, has a request for 1.3 million. Thirdly is the Bay Bridge Airport, at 782,000. The golf course is next at 779,000, and public landings at 609,000. Total for the department is 8.7 million proposed for next year. On the next page, 34, is where we get into the line items for each individual division. The Parks being, Parks being in the first, this is a schedule of their revenues, FY23 actuals, current budget, and next year's proposed budget. Charges for services coming in at 407,000. The third line down is the maintenance charges, which is 330,000, and that's from the Board of Ed for their upkeep of the school grounds. The rest of the revenues follow and seem to match up with the current year's budget. miscellaneous, you have general rents coming in at 135,000 and other miscellaneous program revenues.
So Steve, we operate the Board of Ed grounds at a deficit?
Yes, I mean, that's, that has been consistent for 20, 20-plus years, but yet our responsibilities have increased, you know, not only the responsibilities, but just also the type of fields that we maintained before. I know 20 years ago, all the fields were fescue, and now all of them are Bermuda. So now, you know, Bermuda is a, it's a hardier type grass, but it requires, you know, more fertilizer, more cutting, more time, you know.
Do you ever allocate any capital side stuff for equipment replacement? Because obviously, if you're doing a half million dollars worth of maintenance, you're putting wear and tear on equipment that's...
We have been able to utilize some Board of Ed funds, but that funding came through tournaments. So if there was a tournament that was scheduled to take place at one of the high schools or elementary schools, that money would go into that account, and then we would be able to draw off of that. And they've been, you know, workable with us, you know, when we've come up with an idea.
...even more accurately accounting how much money goes to the school system that we should be figuring out.
Yeah, because you're looking at a quarter million dollar deficit annually, right now.
So that actually spend is more towards Board of Ed than...
Right, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no more questions on Parks revenues, on page 35 are Parks expenditures. Salaries and wages, coming in at 3 million, about three and a half percent higher than last year. Benefits, 1.179 million, about 2% higher. Supplies and materials, 537,900. That increase primarily seems to be in equipment operation, which is 64,000,000, and uniforms and custodial supplies. They're the only increases in that category. Contractual services, near the bottom, 373,000. Again, most of the increase at that very bottom line, about a 50,000 increase in repairs of buildings and grounds over the current year, current year's budget. Page 36, the next major category is other charges, where you have your electric and phone, water, sewer. The only increase is showing, the only proposed increase is showing for next year are in electricity and water and sewer, pretty much. And it comes to a total at the bottom, total request of 5.2 million. Again, it's about a 4% increase over current year's budget. And if there's no questions on Parks expenses, on page 37 are the Recreation revenue and Revenues at 268,000 are up about 16%, mostly in other Parks and Recreation program charges. And then expenses at 1.2 million. Salaries and wages at 655,000.
Steve, why the big drop-off in budgeting the revenues from 23 actual, like 115,000 to 120,000 dollars down? Is there something that happened from the actual to what we're budgeting there, or what?
I'm not...
So...
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
So, the, or the, the budget for FY23 was, I think, around that 230,000, and we exceeded that. We wanted to increase this year, but not increase dramatically due to, I guess, uncertainty of camps with the Y being in town in Centerville. So we kind of wanted to increase it, but not go full in, I guess. That's kind of our method of...
We typically, you know, estimate the revenues on the conservative side. You'll see that probably summarily through a lot of the departments. We don't want to overestimate revenues for fear of, you know, increasing the expenses side, but yes, so...
Yeah, I know, I was saying, this is just a big one. This is almost a third.
Yeah, it is, right.
And I will say, as James was touching base on, you know, we know we're going to take a little bit of a hit with the Y being, being established and having their own programs and camps and leagues and stuff like that. So again, we wanted to be conservative in coming up with a, you know, a reasonable number as far as what, what we could hit. You know, we don't know exactly what the Y is going to offer because it's their first year going into it.
Right.
So it's better, I think, to be, you know, a little conservative. And then next year, come back, we'd have a better idea of what we're competing against. And hopefully, you know, hopefully, we're not offering the same thing on everything. I mean, naturally, we're going after the same group of people, but essentially, I think there's, you know, there can be some, you know, some synergy, you know? We offer certain programs that they're not offering. If we're both offering, say, you know, a basketball league, you know, it's going to be tough because, you know, there's only a limited number of people and, or kids to participate, you know? We could end up washing each other out, where they just barely have enough, and we just have barely enough to make a go. So, you know, we have to be cognizant of that as, you know, as each of us do our programming.
Picking back up, contracted services, about three-quarters of the way down. Bus contracts up 10,000, and maintenance agreements up 11, from four to 15. The maintenance agreement, there's a related enhancement request that we'll get to shortly for that 11,000. I think that's related to WebTrack, their online payment and programming software. Bank service up slightly, most likely due to increasing credit card use and associated fees with credit cards. Page 38, supplies and materials categories at 104,000, which is static with this current year's budget. There's been no, no request to change that. Recreation up a total of 4.2% overall. Page 39, it's the Recreation Grants Fund, which are Summer Days Grant, Recreation Grant, is that a state grant or a...
So the Recreation Grant is through, I think it's the one with the Local Management Board that comes into, through them. Like fee reduction, and then it changes each year based off kind of what we're offering as far as the program. But this year would be fee reduction and then the depth of recreation positions that we're adding now, so...
So total Recreation Grants at 56,000. Next page, 40, 40, we're to the airport, and as Todd said, this is an enterprise department where revenues match expenses. So both revenues and expenses are at 782,481 next year. Going through the revenue line items, fuel sales at 260,000 is up by 80,000 over the current year budget. Hangar rent is about the same at 235,000. Large hangar rent at 68,000. And the increase over current year is primarily due to the hangar being closed and reopening. Is that what you said last... Going about halfway down, there's a transfer in of 59,361. That is our annual transfer from the General Fund to the airport to balance their budget. But as you can see in FY23, that number was zero. So it's, it's serving as a, as a budgetary plug to balance the budget. However, the past few years, they've actually had a surplus and have not needed any General Fund money, which is a good thing.
And is there a waitlist for the hangers?
There's no long waitlist. Extreme the long.
Down to expenses, other charges at 304,000. Slightly up from the current year mainly due to debt service. And insurance of building contents is up a little bit to 19,000. Page 41, supplies and materials at 202,000, primarily up due to increase in airport fuel, aviation fuel, rather. Actually, that's, I believe that's the only increase in that category. Salaries and wages at 161,000. Benefits at 61,000. They are both up slightly. Is that because of the part-time to full-time? Did we put that in there yet?
I think so.
Yeah, they had an, the airport has an enhancement request to move a ramp attendant from part-time to full-time. And that's the increase in salary and wages and benefits. Contracted services, 52,700, primarily static to this year's budget. Finally, on page 42, that's it. Page 43, to the golf course. Again, another enterprise-funded department where we balance revenues with expenditures. Revenues for next year expected to be 779,000, up about 13% over this year. Primarily, the increase you'll see in the first revenue line is golf fees at 380,000 and rental charges at 133. And then akin to the airport, the transfer in is the General Fund potential contribution. However, looking at FY23, in the past few years, they've had a, had a surplus, so have not needed any General Funds.
Quick question for Eric. The golf carts, do we lease those, or do we, we lease them?
Yes, they're on four years. Four years.
Four years. Thank you.
Next, in expenses, 779,000 with no changes in, or minor changes in contracted services. Salary and wages, 200. Looks like there's a slight increase of part-time wages to 120,000. Page 44, other charges, 92,000. Only minor increases in lease payments, which I imagine are the off cart leases. Bank service, 18,500. Again, credit card fees increasing. Supplies and materials, 74,000. And benefits at 28,000. Total increase for the golf course, 13%. But again, it's an enterprise fund, so increases are covered by the revenues they generate, Page 45 is public landings. Revenues at 609,000 next year. Revenues and expenses, both at 609,000, up 0.4%. No market changes in, in any of the revenues from current, current year's budget. Let's see, and expenses, salaries and wages, 250,000, up two and a half percent. Other charges, 155,000, pretty much static. Page 46, all other items and the other charges are pretty much the same as the current year. Contracted services at 88,000 is down slightly. Slight decreases in custodial services and repairs of building and grounds. Benefits at 78,000, up four and a half percent. Supplies and materials at 35,000, same as this current year. Page 47, again, pretty much everything, all these line items are the same as the current year's, current year's budget. And the public landings up 0.4% with no enhancement requests for public landings. On the following few pages, we have the Parks enhancement requests. The first one on page 48 is a request for a crew supervisor arranger. Justification below, and that position has currently not been funded in the, in the proposed On page 49 are some operating enhancement requests for the Parks Department. Overtime requested increase by 5,000, part-time requested increase by 30. Contracted services requested increase by 110. Temporary restrooms requested increase by 2,000. Water and sewer expenses requested increase by 2,000. All of these have been funded, with the exception of contracted services. The $110,000 request was decreased to 50,000. There was some dialogue with Shane in the Rhodes Department, and 50,000, for, this was for bridge inspection services. And I think that was reduced with consultation with Rhodes. Page 50, Recreation Enhancement Requests, and 11,000 request for maintenance agreements, which is referring to the expenditure increase we spoke about a minute ago for their online WebTrack software. And subscriptions induced, requested increase by 4,000. Both were funded in the current proposed budget. Page 51, the airport requested a, a conversion of a part-time ramp attendant to a full-time ramp attendant position, and that, that was funded, with the justification at the bottom of the page. And if there are no questions about the Parks operating budget, we can move to capital.
Can I ask a quick question? Linda, what exactly are the responsibilities of the ramp attendant?
Everything from maintenance of the equipment and the field to helping customers and pumping fuel. A little bit of everything, customer service, taking transactions to pay...
So multiple hats.
I think you've experienced some difficulty filling that position as a part-time position as well.
We advertised twice and not found any qualified candidates. We had two that would have been a good fit, but they said they were only interested if it was full-time.
Full-time, yeah.
We'd like to advertise again at the end of summer and try it one more time for part-time, but if that doesn't work out.
Questions about Parks Recreations or the Enterprise Funds operating accounts, or... Questions about parks recreations or the enterprise funds operating accounts or...
The capital, proposed capital program is next on page fifty-two. The first item is the recreation center for the recreation division. They have two-hundred-fifty thousand programmed in FY twenty-five for planning and design. And I think they currently have a, there's an assessment ongoing this current year.
Yeah, it should be concluded by December, so hopefully by the pleasure of seasons for next year, so.
That's additional planning money, and then in FY twenty-five and twenty-six, there's some placeholders there for construction of that facility.
So that's it for the recreation division. If no questions, we'll move on to parks.
Now, just mentioned too, if there's more, there's more detail on all these capital projects right behind this summary sheet, if there's any questions or, these folks are all here too to answer anything else that, if you have questions or specifics about any of the capital projects, we're going to kind of hit the highlights and go through the FY twenty-five listing here.
First one for parks is trail development, maintenance amenities. Their request was for one million for fiscal year twenty-five. That was reduced to five-hundred thousand. The next line item is athletic field work for two-hundred-fifteen thousand. Next is parks preventive maintenance for fifty thousand. That appears to be just an ongoing request, fifty thousand a year. Next is major, major maintenance for one-hundred-seventy thousand. Next is court work for tennis and pickleball for three-hundred-fifty thousand. And let's see, page sixty-three. The next one is pavilion concession comfort stations for fifty thousand. Capital equipment for parks for three-hundred thousand. Then white marsh sewer, white marsh sewer service, the request was for three-hundred-seventy-five thousand, currently funded at seventy-five. Due to funds already being budgeted that would cover that project. Parks State Park at one-hundred-twenty-five thousand. There was a thirty-thousand-dollar request for box lacrosse fields that was not funded this year in the current proposed budget. Ferry Point Restoration, four-hundred-sixty-eight thousand, of which three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand would be grant-funded. And finally, for parks, pedestrian bridge maintenance for five-hundred thousand. Total for parks, two-point-eight million for FY twenty-five.
Skate park, is that funded in twenty-four? Is that why? That's only one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
Yeah. It's the restroom portion of it. So the skate park is already funded. In fact, the skate park isn't even counting money. The skate park is from, a grant from DNR, it's the LPPI program. So basically, for one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, you're getting a bathroom and a skate park. It's a pretty good deal.
When do you anticipate breaking ground? It's coming up very soon.
Supposed to be April eighth. It was going to be the first of April, but weather and last-minute sign-offs, just, we were prepared to just go ahead.
Are you going to put the bathroom in at the same time or are you going to have to wait till after July one?
We're going to wait till after July one.
Think it'll be ready, I mean, complete by July first?
Yes. The projected timeline for the skate park to be completed should be, it said ten to twelve weeks, which puts us about June fifteenth.
We could certainly accelerate that if, if it's ready to go, we can certainly accelerate the bathroom component. Yeah, okay. That's all the parks. Any other questions for the parks capital? Okay?
Next are the public landings, capital projects, of which they have two. Jackson's, Jackson Creek Shoreline Protection, ten thousand dollars, which is grant-funded. And the Kent Narrows Landing Bulkhead, which is seventy-five thousand, also grant-funded. For total of eighty-five thousand for public landings. Finally, the airport has one capital project for hangar maintenance, twenty-five thousand for next year. Total for all parks divisions, three-point-one-six-three million proposed for next year. That is, that is it? Unless there are any...
Question for me, for the, on the airport. What's the status of the runway? I mean, I know we talked about they had to come back, it was just a little bit, we had to do some milling, and that's all warranty work, right?
It is. It won't cost us anything, but we're still working out a solution that's acceptable to us since the FAA.
Any other punch list items other than the surface being a little irregular?
Yeah. I mean, there's some areas that have sunk in that they have to come back in and, and fill, like around the taxiway lights and some issues with the gate and a few signs, but minor things.
All right. I think that's all we had for parks recreation, airport, golf course, and public landings for tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
DPW guys are out there waiting, coming.
This is regular stuff, isn't it?
It's different when you see, ten years ago, eight years ago. You come in with all this, we just had no money to do it, so it was like, nope, nope.
A quick thank you to the guys for fixing the home run fence so quickly. That game would have not taken place had they got, not got that fixed.
So tell them thank you.
I will. I'll pass it on.
Oh, absolutely.
How you doing?
Good.
How are you? All right.
That's just how it is.
Yeah, I know. I remember.
We're bringing that all hang up downstairs.
Yeah, my husband doesn't get off till like six, six-thirty all the way in Easton, so I have nobody.
All your folks here?
I have four times as much buddies.
Probably there's only a few of these, it's not too bad.
Can you on? All right. Next, we have the Department of Public Works, so I'll ask Alan or any of his team if they want to make any opening remarks about the department, and then we'll get into the details of the operations and capital budgets.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. As you know, public works consists of five main divisions. The oldest is the Rhodes Division, maintains five-hundred-and-fifty miles of road, thirty bridges with forty full-time employees. They also construct roads when they're being converted from other public to county roads, as you know, for county estates. Currently, Rhodes gets about twenty percent of its funding from highway user revenues, but doesn't look good for the out-years in that regard. Within the Rhodes Division, there's the fleet maintenance operation with non-mechanics that maintains approximately four-hundred cars and pieces of equipment. And also under Rhodes is Solid Waste, which operates the five transfer stations, as well as transports the waste originally and collects and markets recyclables to the extent that they can. And Solid Waste, as you know, is partially funded by ticket book sales. The next is Engineering Division. The Engineering Division reviews plans of private developers and shore compliance with standards and regulations of the county. They also handle the majority of the larger capital projects for the counties. Engineering also includes General Services, which consists of five maintenance technicians and ten custodial people who maintain over forty county buildings, and Engineering's a hundred percent general funded. Property Management Division handles rentals of the county land as agricultural or hunting rights, weed control, mosquito control, and they also handle various real estate issues as they arise for the county, or at least for Public Works and other. Last, not last, Animal Services is next. As you know, Kelly gave you an excellent overview of her operation a couple of weeks ago. They provide shelter and sustenance to lost or unwanted cats and dogs and other pets, and tries their best to place these animals in suitable homes. That staff consists of about fourteen full-time and three contractual, also a hundred percent general funded. And last but not least is the Sanitary District. They provide water and sewer service to approximately one-third of the county's population with a staff of sixty full-time employees. They also employ inspectors to oversee private development projects, the ski construction, and miss utility locates and try to keep a handle on the cable cowboys. Sanitary District is an enterprise account with a hundred percent funding via user fees. And I don't know that you've all met Matt. Matt is their new chief sanitary engineer. Excuse me. He was under leave for a few years, but we stole, sanitary district stole him from.
Just a quick question. Who's the gentleman that is doing the babysitting in Graysonville?
Graysonville, his name is Chris Burton. He's one of our inspectors, Chris Burton.
Chris Bergen?
Burton.
Burton. Okay. I drive past him every day.
Big guy?
Big guy.
Sure.
Yeah. He's a good babysitter. I'd do whatever he told me.
They need, yeah, well, they need babysitting.
I understand Talkie was down gravel run road recently putting some fiber in the invert of the ditch, so I was, I haven't got a chance to talk to Matt. Were you talking about the same thing?
Yeah.
Sitting it down there with the cable, cable installation, fiber installation, so, yeah.
So just because I have some folks that are asking, they were, they had the, the concrete saws and they were cutting square blocks out of the, out of the road, I guess just lifting them back out and then putting them back in. Is that, is that because they have to get back there later or...
I can't imagine what they were doing. The only thing that's at the service are handhole boxes, so I don't know what they're doing, cutting, not putting handhole boxes in the roads, are they? So I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah. There's a couple of spots where they've literally cut out a block this big.
That's about the size of a handhole box, but I don't know why.
And set it back down, right in the middle of the road.
Gravel Run?
Timber Lane and Gravel Run.
Take a look at it.
Yep. Did you make that left off of Gravel Run into Timber Lane? Right there at the entrance, this big.
Unless they were test-pitting, which is, I like, I like things that are test-pitting.
Cold weather comes back around and, I mean, that's...
They cut the same holes on eighteen over there by the library.
Could have something to do with the directional.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Either utility or something they don't want to hit and they're being careful.
Or find a bit.
Yeah.
Or find the bit that they lost, broke off.
Happens.
Okay, I, again, just curious, I don't know if it's going to get left that way. I don't know too much about it, but I can tell you that once the cold weather comes and the rain, we're going to have a big old hole in the road there.
Take a look at it.
All right. Thank you.
End of my introduction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quimby. All right. Commissioners, we can turn to the DPW tab. We'll go through the revenue side, Public Works, operations, and all the divisions, and then we'll do capital. Jeff, on page eighty?
Eighty. All right. This is a summary of all the revenues for the six public works divisions that are funded by the general fund. Rhodes is budgeted next year at six-point-seven million. Rhodes is comprised of one-point-eight million highway user revenue and about five million from the general fund. Solid waste at four-hundred-ninety thousand, property management at one-hundred-and-ninety-five, general services, thirty-five thousand, animal services, forty thousand, engineering at forty thousand, for a total of seven-point-five million next year. Revenue increase of about four-point-seven percent over the current year. On page eighty-one is likewise a summary of the six divisions, including sanitary district expenditures. Rhodes, six-point-seven million, general services at three-point-five, solid waste one-point-nine, animal services one-point-six, engineering at one-point-three, public works administration at six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and property management at four-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
What is the property management?
Yeah, you've got lands that you rent for hunting, you've got land that you rent for tilling, and there's some rental properties, and there's also mosquito control and weed control fall underneath.
So we're showing equal revenue in and out on the roads?
Yeah, it's similar to, similar to how the enterprise funds were, where the revenues equal expenditures. We, the general fund contributes to roads to match their expenditures for the year. Over and above what highway user revenue covers.
Okay. So you're just, for accounting purposes, you're just making it look clean across board, really? It's not an enterprise fund, but you're...
It used to be, it used to be a separate fund.
Right, now, I remember when, before we did...
Highway user revenue would fund the entire program, so it had to be kept separate.
Right, and then we had to change it.
We put it all back in general fund, and then they told us we had to really keep it separate because we do get HUR.
So you're basically, you're backing into the budget, you're developing what the expenses are, and then taking highway users or rev, highway user away, and then we just backfill it with rev, general fund, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Gotcha.
How bad do you think that's going to be?
Surprised that we'd have any in a few years of the token.
Yeah, this year, the governor did do a one-time fix for the county.
That's gone.
But after this year, it's, it's...
It'll be half of what we were this year. Whatever this year is, it'll be half next year.
Have to look forward to, I guess. Yeah.
What you said, it's one-point-two this year that's in there?
One-point-eight for FY twenty-five.
So total public works expenditures, sixteen-point-two million, up four-point-eight percent. Page eighty-two is the line-by-line for each of the individual divisions. Public Works Administration is first. Salaries and wages at three-hundred-eighty-six thousand, benefits at one-hundred-seventeen-thousand, other charges at ninety-eight thousand, same as current year. Supplies and materials at thirteen thousand. The only difference is a thousand extra in office supplies. And coming in a total of six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, down two percent from the current Page eighty-three are animal services revenue. License and permits at thirty-four thousand, same as this year. Yeah, actually, it's forty, the total's forty thousand, same as this year. Page eighty-four are animal services expenses. Salaries and wages, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, which is up five-point-four percent. Supplies and materials at two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. The only difference between this year and last year are some slight increases in medical supplies, animal supplies, and custodial supplies. Just increase of ten thousand dollars total. Benefits, two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. Contracted services, one-hundred-and-twenty-two. Other charges, one-hundred-and-eighteen. No major changes over the current year. On page eighty-five, capital outlay, sixty thousand. On page eighty-five, capital outlay, sixty thousand, which I think is for, well, it's for an additional vehicle request. Total, one point six million dollars. Total increase for Animal Services, eleven percent, but a lot of that is the one-time vehicle replacement of sixty thousand.
Remember what that used to be, Jack? Do you remember what that used to be, Animal Services?
Forty.
Yeah, it was a couple hundred thousand. It kept growing. It was growing exponentially and it got up to six hundred and we were like, oh my God, look where we are now.
Page eighty-six, Engineering revenue, forty thousand for development review fees, also the same as the current year. Page eighty-seven, Engineering expenses. Salaries and wages at eight hundred sixty-five K. Benefits at two ninety-seven, down slightly. Contracted services, seventy thousand five hundred with slight increases to A and E and, let's see, yeah, just A and E, I guess. Other charges, twenty-five thousand. Minor increases to meetings and conferences, subscriptions and dues, communications, and training. Supplies and materials, nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty. Just inflationary minor increases. On page eighty-eight, capital outlay of forty thousand, which is a replacement vehicle with a grand total of one point three million. Total engineering increase of five percent. Page eighty-nine, General Services revenue, total of thirty-five thousand, same as budgeted It's revenue from solar, Tesla, no, I don't know what it is then. Page ninety, General Services expenses. One million. Slight increase for propane, gas, and heating oil. Salaries and wages at nine hundred three thousand are pretty much the same as this year. Contracted services, nine hundred fourteen thousand, up primarily due to a fifteen thousand dollar increase in temperature control maintenance agreement and consultants, trash removal and pest control increases. Benefits, three hundred eighty-eight thousand. Page ninety, supplies and materials, two hundred thousand, up six percent from current year, primarily due to an increase in equipment operation. Capital outlay, sixty thousand dollars is for an additional van. Total division increase is three percent. Page ninety-two is property management revenue. Total of a hundred ninety-five thousand. Slight increase in general rents and mosquito control fees. Page ninety-three, property management expenses. Salary and wages, a hundred seventy-two thousand. Supplies and materials, a hundred fifty-five thousand. Let's see, benefits, sixty-four thousand. Increases in supplies and materials, other. Total of four hundred ten thousand, up eleven percent. Page ninety-four, Rhodes revenue. The transfer in is the amount that comes from the general fund to make a hole. And then highway users, one point eight million, projected to be one point eight million next year. And inspection.
You can see the steady increase in H U R for the last three years and then probably this is going to be where we peak out at one point eight in twenty-five and it's going to probably be on the.
I mean, the original deal was only good to twenty-five anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Supposed to renegotiate it.
Yeah, so we can look forward to a drop-off in our state share revenues there probably in the future, the next couple of years.
Remember the days when you'd get six, seven million?
Not using any of your train commission?
In terms of recommendations, they haven't implemented anything at this point. We're going to go back into session, I guess, as soon as the General Assembly's finished out and conclude the reporting, you know, by January of next year.
Meanwhile, it just keeps shrinking.
Yeah, that's right.
Total Rhodes revenue, six point seven million, up five percent from the current Page ninety-five is Rhodes expenditures. Of note here, supplies and materials halfway down, one point five million, up ten percent, primarily due to increases in diesel and tires. Other items are pretty much the same. Page ninety-six, other charges, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, just minor increases to highway lighting, subscription and dues. Capital outlay is a placement vehicle of a hundred forty thousand. Consultants up ten thousand for a total expenses of six point seven million, five point one percent increase. Page ninety-seven, solid waste revenues, same as the current year's budget, four hundred Our ticket book fees and recycling charges. Page ninety-eight, solid waste expenses. Salary and wages, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, up three percent. Other charges, everything's the same except subscriptions and dues going up a little bit, well, ten thousand. Benefits, two hundred seventy-three thousand, which is also up three percent. Tracked and services at two sixty-nine is the same as current year. Supplies and materials, two hundred twenty-one thousand. And on page ninety-nine, total solid wastes, one point nine, up two and a half percent. On page one hundred, we get to the enhancement requests. Animal Services requesting sixty thousand for additional vehicle, which is approved and in the current proposed budget for FY twenty-five. Page one hundred and one is just the justification for the vehicle. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Page one hundred and one is the request for the General Services additional van, sixty thousand, which was approved in the proposed budget. One hundred and two is a Rhodes request for additional personnel administrative assistant two, which was approved in the current proposed budget. And the following page, one hundred and three, is their justification. Page one hundred and four, we get to the Sanitary District. The revenues reflect the recent two point five percent fee increase approved by the Charges for services, seven point seven million. The transfer in or funds from the debt fund to cover sanitary debt service. Investment income is up, as well as penalties. And expenses at nine point one million. Salaries and wages, three point one, up three point four percent. Page one hundred and five, other charges, one point eight million, pretty much the same as this current year. Benefits, one point two million, up five percent. Supplies and materials, one point one million. Increases shown primarily in shop and automotive supplies, gas, pipe and lab supplies. Page one hundred and six, contracted services, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand. Again, just showing increases in repairs, buildings and grounds and vehicles. Capital outlay, nine hundred two thousand. Your items funded by operating funds in the capital budget. And one hundred and seven is sanitary water, also reflecting recent two and a half percent fee increase. Total revenue budget of four point five million. Let's see. Rents, a hundred sixty thousand. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a new accounting rule that requires the rent revenue be reclassified to lease revenue, and that's why a hundred sixty thousand is in the one line, but it'll move to the line below it for lease revenue.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what's in the rent revenue. The lease revenue is something separate. Where we had a new Gatsby pronouncement that required us to account for leases and subscriptions differently, and I think everybody's probably sent all of those copies into finance over the last year. So there are changes in the financials due to that. I don't think it has to do with rents.
I think it's the tower leases.
Oh, the tower, okay.
Yeah, all the rents are cell phone tower leases.
Right, okay.
New customers that we have on the new waterline extension down from Chester down to the same as we had before? Shopping center or the same?
Yeah, it's connected, yeah.
They're still poised to connect?
Yep.
Yeah, good.
I haven't been there yet, so, it's a Tokyo bed.
Yeah, me neither.
You haven't been there yet either?
Nope. I'm not going until they're on our water. I'm holding ground. That's right, you know?
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
All right. Investment income, up to a hundred ten thousand. And down to expenses, four point five million. Let's see, supplies and materials, seven forty-six, primarily increasing gas and diesel, automotive supplies. Tracked and services, six hundred forty-six thousand, up five percent due to increases in equipment repair, repairs of buildings and grounds. And capital, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, and pairing up with items funded with operating funds in the capital budget. Other charges at three hundred four thousand, up slightly due to propane. I think that's the only increase, propane and subscription and dues, communications. And that's it for sanitary wastewater. Next page is page one hundred and ten, sanitary ski. Revenues of one point seven million, not subject to the fee increase recently approved.
Yeah, but that was, that one affects ski, right?
No.
That is. Going back to page one hundred and nine, I have a question here about the replacement of equipment. And the top of page one hundred and nine went from two hundred thousand to eight ninety-four for equipment. What was proposed in next year?
We'll get to it as we get to the capital, I guess.
Those items are in the capital budget.
Are in the capital? Okay. We'll get to those in a minute. Funded and operating, but they're listed in the capital work sheets, is that right? Okay.
Yep. Page, yeah, one twelve is Sellersville wastewater. Let's see. Revenue is a hundred ninety-one thousand. Alan, I don't know much about the new Sellersville operator. Are we, I don't know if you want to explain like what we're doing there. We're not billing, but are we running their entire facility now, water and sewer?
Yeah, and we are billing. We bill them every month.
You bill the town of Sellersville, right?
Yes.
And then, but, yeah, and then they pay us to operate the wastewater plant. Now, I've also heard recently that there's some concerns about the town billing their customers, getting their money so they can pay, you know, us as the operator. So have you heard any other issues lately on that front?
No, I mean, they've got a contractor that's doing the billing now.
Oh, they do? Okay. Well, that's.
Had that for a couple of years. So, but that doesn't really address the people paying the bill. It's just sending the bills out.
Somebody else has to.
Well, I thought it was, I've heard a lot of different. Well, I thought it was, I've heard a lot of different stories, you know, whether people are not paying or whether it's a billing, you know, problem on the town's side of the.
Fortunately, I don't have to deal with that.
Well, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that hopefully the contractor's doing well because if they're not, if there's billing error on their side, that's just going to get back so they won't be able to pay, you know.
Well, I don't know they're doing too well because we have a facility up there that gets billed.
Foxtown. Right, I know.
Foxtown's bills have not been straightened.
They're still not.
Working on getting it corrected with them. They're very difficult to get a hold of. We've been working on it. Just billing errors, it seemed when they got the contractor on, we had a lot of issues before. Since the contractor's been brought onboard, we noticed remarkable improvements. Billing seemed to be much more reliable. It was about two months ago, maybe about a month or two ago. We noticed we were going through our annual utility bills for the Foxtown facility. The water and sewer bills were not accurate. And they were saying we owed more than we, we do. So unfortunately, it took a couple of weeks to get in touch with someone to try to address that.
How did you know that they were over billing you? You looked at the meters or?
We, well, we looked at the bill and then we questioned the values. So they said that we owe, what the bill indicated was that we owed back charges for bills not paid. And we'd always paid the bill every month, so we pulled all the documentation, like, look where. And we found it picked up out of the clear blue. Like they, it referenced something from a couple of months before which had not occurred. So I don't quite know what the error was, but we can certainly look to see if we can determine what it was and try to help them.
I said, there's been a number of folks that have inquired about being on tax sale in the town of Sellersville. And they claim they paid all their bills. In fact, they overpaid their bills, they believe. And of course, you know, that deadline's coming up in a couple of weeks. So you don't want to necessarily put somebody on the tax sale for a bill that's not been accurately presented to the customer. So, okay.
Out of curiosity, how's the connection to Barclay gone?
I've shared with you that the bottleneck right now is getting meter pans for the electrical hookups. So, I mean, all the pumps are, all the pits are in place, almost all the pipings in place. It is receiving flow. I mean, they've been pumping for about two months now. A few homes because, because of the meter pan issue. But we still hope that it'll be done on time. I mean, Bramble was way ahead of schedule. It would probably have been done two months ahead of schedule heading for, heading for the electrical hiccup.
Can we, going back to, we were just talking about these, the potential properties for tax sales for, for folks that believe that they paid their bill. Do we know how many we're talking about here or?
I've had a couple of different inquiries just recently because it's, it's that time of year, people are getting notices.
They get their letter.
Right.
Do you send Jim Hayes?
So they, they have to rectify it with a third party in order to avoid the tax sale? Or, I mean, is there an independent audit that takes place with the information? Because I mean, if you're telling me there's issues with the third party, I certainly don't want them to be the last, say, in the line of, you owe your tax sale, but obviously if they're screwing up, that's not a good thing.
We were able to rectify it, but I, I do find that being, being the county, we have a little bit more weight on that. We're not going to pay this until we resolve this, but, you know, we have that benefit that perhaps the individual consumer doesn't. I will say, one of the things that we did notice was that, you know, over the last couple of years or so, since they brought the third party onboard to do the billing, it improved. Because we had a lot of issues previously when it was made.
I remember.
So it has been improved. I can't, I presume.
On tax sale either, so.
Now, answer your question, no, there's nobody in between. It's between the rate payer and the, and the billing company. There's nobody in between. I mean, it's, Sellersville has nobody in between.
But the, if the town's got to put it on the tax sale, right? So, I mean, they do have their elected officials as a.
Correct, they do. Correct. Yes.
Well, they could stay it.
Yeah.
Till it's resolved.
Moving on.
I'll, I'll look into that.
Yeah.
All right. Page one fourteen is sanitary enhancement. For new, new positions, civil engineer one, currently funded in the proposed budget.
So I'm curious, I've seen this in a couple of spots. Do we just basically mark benefits at fifty percent of salary?
We calculate using the highest package for the health insurance and then FICA, Medicare. Those are all standard rates.
That's based on family plan?
Yes.
Person is single, that would be much, probably.
Correct.
It's our benefit.
Half of that or less.
Right.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
And page one fifteen is the justification for the position.
Do we have, do you have a candidate that you've, you've been grooming through the intern program for this position?
We do. I'm waiting to hear back, a response to our reaching out to her. And we had a good experience over the summer with an internship with her. And she enjoyed working with us down at sanitary and we enjoyed working with her. So we're, we're hopeful, but she's senior at Delaware right now. So she's a little busy with some schoolwork right now, but I've been in touch with her. So waiting to hear back.
Great programs. Great programs.
Yeah, I'm glad we got that started a couple of years ago with, you know, with human resources.
Especially with, you know, trying to find. When you're filling the engineer positions, I mean, across the country, they're writing their own tickets, you know? So she can spend some time or he can spend some time with us. Okay. But if they can spend some time with us, they get accustomed to the job and now they graduate college. It's not like they got to start all over, you know?
Isra Thorne, a thank you for supporting that internship program because, you know, Todd and Alan, they know we've, we've struggled with, you know, across a lot of departments, the professional and, you know, filling some of these positions. But we really struggled with the engineers. And since, you know, we've been working with HR and they've, they've helped in supporting that internship program, we've, you know, been introduced to several promising young professionals that previously just we weren't getting through the normal advertising process. So it has been a very valuable program. And, and even those that decide that, you know, career isn't perhaps with the county, they've gained really valuable experience that they're taking back into their work role. And they're sharing it with their fellow students in schools. So we've met about four or five young engineers now over the last two years.
Just from referrals?
Right, just through the internship program. So it has been a very positive experience for us.
For the operating budget, if there's questions, we'll move on to capital on page one sixteen. This first section, outside agencies and other, there's only one item in here, Public Works Related, which is the fifth item down, Chesapeake Heritage Visitor Center. This was pushed, it was originally a hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, but it was pushed back a year. Then under the next section.
While we're here, did you want to, we had that one other item for the, I noticed the Four H Park Board improvements. We have some money for their program to continue the enhancements and programs down there. But I think we had a memo here that we can maybe just pass that out because they, they ran into some unsuitable soil on the project down there. We need a little bit of an enhancement for a change order. So I asked the guys to put this together for consideration or at least for information this evening so we can provide some additional funding for that project and keep them moving forward with the.
So, so in a nutshell, what is it?
Combo.
This is for the, the ongoing Four H Park Improvement Project for the storm drains.
Yeah, but you said something about soil.
It was unsuitable soil, below subgrade, they're going to have to remove, either remove it.
Change it on the stormwater.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Add soil cement to the, to the under, to the grade underneath.
Right. You may recall that Public Works, we've been assisting the Four H Park Board with their capital improvement plan. Lot of good improvements out there. And one of the ones that we've been working hard to get done by May of this year has been the stormwater infrastructure, which includes installation of new pipe throughout the site as well as new asphalt pavement, which is necessary to get the water to channel to all the inlets along the kind of midway there and a lot of those areas. And the first phase of this contracted work has been the storm drain. Going through that storm drain, they've encountered clay soils throughout, which we know when it comes to the second phase of putting down the new asphalt pavement. And in fact, we're finding that there's not even, in some cases, barely an inch of asphalt. So the sub base materials are just not adequate to support. We'd be putting down new asphalt, which would be failing relatively quickly. So this was discovered about a week ago. We updated, you know, had discussions with the Four H Park Board and updated Todd. And because we're trying to keep the project on schedule to perhaps even have this whole major part done by May in order that the park may, you know, begin its summer activities, Todd suggested that we could bring a memo to you this evening and present the issue. And we're asking for budget authority of three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents in order to apply soil cement remedy to all seventy thousand square feet of asphalt throughout the park. And what I included with the memo there, there's a, your page two there is, is a picture of some of the soils that we've encountered. You can, you can see where the, I have a lot of pumping there with the clay material. And then the, the third page is a color coded map of the park. The green represents the predominant pedestrian pathways, you know, the midway and all that. And then the pink is the additional paved areas throughout the park. All that is the seventy thousand square feet of existing asphalt, which is to be milled and replaced. Soil cement would be applied to all these areas to ensure that the asphalt that we goes, that goes down will ideally last for many, many years to come.
We don't have to go backwards now. I mean, it's been sixty years since anyone's done there, so.
The soil cement needs to go on the green and the pink areas?
Correct.
Seventy thousand.
Everything, so basically it's going on everything. Anywhere they're going to pay.
Before.
Everywhere runway is, yeah, pretty much.
That's a lot of square yards of soil cement. Yeah, I mean, you know how many trucks that is?
It's three hundred, three hundred and eight thousand dollars worth, apparently. That's what I'm going with.
Do we need to make a motion this evening?
You don't have to this evening.
Whatever you want to call it.
Seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six yards, square yard.
That's what I'm saying. So your truckload's about fifteen cubic yards. That's a.
Our truck's going in and out there. What do they want to do?
What I'm saying, when you're putting that much in, you got to be taking something out. Anyways. Somebody's down there mining the store, right?
They're going to, where are they going to put it at, where they have a place that they're going to get rid of?
Yeah.
I don't know the specifics on that. I will certainly inquire. It would have to be disposed, you know, somewhere. Although, well, I, I believe actually the remedy is to just use the soils on site. I mean, it's clay, but, you know, it's excavating that up to a depth of about nine inches, injecting the, the soil cement and then replacing it. So there actually would not be materials removed. It's, it's applying the soil cement to the, to the.
Oh, to stabilize it underneath it, gotcha.
Right, it cuts through and mixes with it. But still, it's about four hundred and eighty truckloads.
Substance, well, it would be for, what the proposal is, is to cover all the areas there on, on the map, the green and the pink. Idea being, we don't go back a few years from now and fix it due to premature deterioration. But it, before, before this evening, I know when we, you know, presented this earlier, there's a big push to, to get it done this season. And there's a chance we could get the asphalt done by May. And in order to do that, the soil cement would be the, the way to go. So every week matters, that, that's why we brought you this evening.
Sure, those rainy weeks, they really matter. Phil, you can say you're going to make a motion or Jack?
I move to accept the proposal by Barton's excavation and hauling LLC in amount of three hundred and eight thousand, three forty-four seventy-two for the application of seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six square yards of soil cement with associated grading improvements. Queen Anne's County Four H Park authorized director, Public Works to administer additional budget authority.
Make a motion in a second, any discussion? Being known, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zip.
Just what we talked about earlier, to try to get a number. On, I mean, the, you know, people come in, in the Four H Fair for four or five days. You know, at three dollars a pop and it could be thousands of people that are coming through. Where's that revenue going?
We can talk in the Four H Park. I'll, I'll talk in the Four H Park.
I'm sure there's a logical.
What I've done.
Explanation.
You figure they did that other cow barn last year with all their incoming and it's, they're putting it in there. It's just, it's a lot over there. They let go for.
Last two years.
Seventy-five years, they really, they haven't done anything since nineteen fifty-something was the last time they did any kind of renovation there, so. It's going to look great.
Yeah, it will.
And, and it'll increase the revenue opportunities there.
Putting the cell tower in there too?
Yes. All services part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not come up over your ankles while you're standing there.
That waterfall's you wherever you go.
No, it's crazy. Some of us got smart and left.
Jim was, Jim was guarding the baked goods.
Oh, yeah. Somebody, somebody had to.
In case of belly blue, make your start going anywhere.
All right.
Back to our regular.
Thank you, brother. All right, page one sixteen. Let's see, I think we're down to counting facilities, which is under or above administrative and general services, counting facilities. Four hundred thousand proposed. If, if at any point any questions arise about any of these projects, we can stop and look at the individual requests. The next item, Crumpton Building, sixty-five thousand programmed. Continuation of Liberty Building renovations, two hundred thousand. Wetland mitigation for ten thousand. EMS four stormwater management, one hundred and fifty thousand. Traffic study, fifty thousand.
What are we doing at EMS four hundred?
So the EMS four hundred, so that's the former helicopter.
Right.
So the adjacent Public Works. With that building, this is going to be envelope improvements. Roof, exterior walls and roof have, are original to the building. If you take a look, they're pretty well deteriorated and, I mean, it's not, the building is not very weatherproof. So one of the things we get a lot from DES is the fact that it's a very drafty building. You have, on a rainy day like today, you will see water seeping in from the.
To the ambulance base and to where the ambulance are kept indoors.
So what this project would do is new insulation throughout the interior of the building and new metal roof and siding on the exterior of the building is, is the proposal, or at least some repairs. We'll. Put this way, that, that's the request.
Okay.
And competing priorities.
Next item, Housing Authority Facility Recapitalization, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Recapitalization, so that's, that's the repairs and the fixings of the senior centers? The senior housing?
Yes. This was, we put this line item in a few years ago before you took housing back, but just to set money aside to do major repairs like we did at Riverside a few years ago.
I wonder if that number's enough.
Yeah, it isn't. No. So are we just going to wait till we come back with some numbers and do some amendments then or are we going to?
I thought, originally it was two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So we would build up a, a reserve and have some money to do something, but.
Yeah, I still think we need to have to come out of the gate with half a mil to a million.
Least.
For the next meeting, you know, we can. All right.
Yeah, but again, this budget item was before. Can't wait to verify. And they were supposed to be doing some maintenance on their dime.
There's currently five hundred thousand dollars available.
In it right now? From what, from?
From prior years.
From prior years.
There's some this year and the prior.
The year before.
So this would make it up to seven fifty then, available, you know, now.
Getting close.
Okay. So let me ask you a question, who's doing, are we doing any work there yet?
Which, no.
Okay, so whatever's going on there now is something that they're doing?
We're doing some emergency stuff.
Okay.
They're not doing anything. I don't think they're doing anything. I think it's, now it's, it's all with us.
Looks like there was a, a big ladder there the other day with some siding.
Yeah, they had an inspection and there was some roofing.
Siding is stained and, okay. All right.
General Services is handling that.
I mean, we, we can't go anywhere, not run into some of those folks that live there.
Yeah.
I mean, it comes with the territory, I'm not complaining. And it's fun to speak to them.
Yeah, generally now, we're doing some inspections, and I think Dave's been out there looking at some of the sites, trying to get a handle on what.
But together a punch-out list?
Getting together, and, yeah.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a high level, it's kind of a high-level overview of viewing the facilities to see what might be low-line fruit, so to speak, or quick, quick hits that we could do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Maybe we can get you to share with us your findings.
And if you hear anything from the residents, by all means, you know, pass that on, because there's gonna be, you know, some things we're gonna uncover, I'm sure. There's been some small things, some emergency repairs we've done, but there's gonna be more, so we're, we're working through that process now, yeah.
Next item on the list is Cloverfield's Flood Mitigation for fifty thousand. Circuit Courthouse, fifty thousand. Bloom Field Matter, house stabilization, a hundred thousand.
Expensive not to tear anything down.
Sebeck Sewer Extension, seventy-five thousand, and Health Department Roof Replacement for a hundred fifty thousand next, this year, next year, rather.
So there's out-years for the Sheriff's Office, is that a new, a new facility?
New facility, replacement facility.
He's been a patient man.
He has, he has.
Although it may not be, may not be in place by the time he's there.
Always that possibility, that's right.
Public Safety Property Acquisition, a million.
What is, what is that? Explain that.
That's a, that's a. Some funds for the ability for us to purchase property for either a new animal services facility at some point, a new location, in which we could sell the old place and/or potentially if we're gonna rent or do something for, at one of the fire stations. So we wanted to, you know, start getting some funds available for those potential transitions, you know, for animal services and for, you know, for EMS at, at either Graysonville or Queenstown.
Or both.
Or potentially both. I mean, the Graysonville Company's building a new firehouse.
I mean, yeah, they're, they're looking for a partnership in that, in that ambulance bay.
As well as Queenstown, they're, they're a little behind, farther behind on their efforts to rebuild their station, but they did get a piece of property, so I'm not sure.
Is that off limits from any other thing?
No.
It is not. Well, the only, the only restriction is, the only restriction is, it has to be government, it can't be.
So I'm saying, so Sheriff's Department Animal Services could go there, you've got plenty of property there for all that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. The Detention Center, new regional, yeah, Detention Center property, yeah.
Eighty, eighty, I think it's eighty, yeah.
One-stop shop?
Okay, that's it for property management.
How'd you go visit, get a cat?
Wait, did you just say that?
I did.
You don't wanna move that detention center up a year? You got it at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What is, how are things going with that?
We are largely at the mercy of the state granting cycles.
Excuse me?
Yeah, at the mercy of the grant, the state grants funding cycles.
Oh, okay.
We're moving as fast as we can, but.
That's, so that's why it's at twenty-seven, just because of how this is gonna play out with getting our portion from the state, okay?
I mean, if, if there is a possibility to move it up, we, we certainly could, right?
Provided, it, it depends on the funding, I mean.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It's a huge expense, and I don't think you wanna front too far. The way that grant program, you have to put, pay your share out entirely before you start getting grant money for their share.
It was included in this year's budget there, right, in the state budget?
It was not.
It was not?
It was not. They had money programmed in FY twenty-six, but it was too late for this year.
Well, that's, that's only for twenty-six, yeah, okay, so it is ten, it was ten million for FY twenty-six.
Well, it just said out-years.
Out-years, okay.
So that means next year, there'll be for twenty-seven in the out-years?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got at least a year in design, and we can't really start anything until the state gives us the approval to start, because we do, with any money we expend, we won't get, won't count towards our grant reimbursement, so we're, again, at the mercy of the state.
Okay, all right. Appreciate the info.
They are reviewing our Part One and Part Two Facility Plan now, which is a step one. Once that gets approved, then things start to break loose.
How does all that work with Caroline and Kent County? I mean, does it just, we move forward like it's ours and ours alone, and?
They're, they're.
Their, their deal between us and them has nothing to do with the state? The state doesn't?
Or is operations?
Yeah, well, in, in the construction of it, I mean.
We're, we're operating as if it's a county facility and there are gonna be customers.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine by me.
Okay, any more questions on the? All right.
We're on page one seventeen now, we mentioned the Detention Center, next is solid waste section, transfer station maintenance for fifty, and capital equipment for small and non-motorized equipment for a hundred forty thousand. Public Library, we have one item, for Centerville Library Improvements, one hundred thousand. And skip the Recreation Center. The next Public Works item is under aging, the third one down, Kramer Center Renovations, one hundred thousand programs.
Is that the, what's a hundred thousand for? That's not to close in the skylight, is it?
No, that's, that's under the, the present funding that we have to close out the skylights. The hundred thousand would accommodate any additional wrap-up as we take care of that room and, and, you know, move in the, the new operations with housing, as well as a focus on landscaping surrounding the building major. There's a lot of drainage issues.
Yeah.
It doesn't look so great, and the, the site hydraulically doesn't function very well, so a predominant portion of that funding would be insproving, improving the landscaping and drainage around the building.
Thank you.
Page one eighteen. Of the Roads Capital Projects, first one being capital heavy and construction equipment, capital items for one point one million. Miscellaneous capital equipment for sixty thousand. There was a submittal for fifty thousand for parking lot overlays, but that was removed from the proposed budget. Asphalt overlays, two point three million. The next item for next year.
So, hold on just a second. So on the heavy construction equipment, the one point one million, is that? A lot of equipment, is that, just curious, is?
Probably, probably a couple pieces.
Yeah, well, the biggest piece is the grade all, which is over six hundred thousand estimated.
There you go.
It's mostly that.
And then on the asphalt overlays, I, I thought we talked a couple of years ago about getting the Liberty Build, Liberty Building Parking Lot done, is that?
It's still in the budget. I think there's a, a fair amount of money in the parking lot overlay budget currently, so it's scheduled.
I don't think anything's been done to that parking lot since it was probably built.
It's actually glass fault.
Excuse me?
It was originally done in glass fault. It's recycled glass.
Yeah, I, I see the sparkle, yeah.
We're waiting for landscaping to get done, and then we can fix the curb, and then we can pave it.
Okay.
Think that'll be done this, this season, this year?
Hopefully, yes.
This is Thompson Creek Connector for one million, seven hundred seventy thousand.
Those are grant, those are grant dollars.
Both of them, is there any contribution on our part?
We don't have any contribution in there yet, we're still in design mode right now for that. That's the connection between, through Bellendale up to Thompson Creek Service Road, yeah, by the, right there by Lito's Pizza coming through there, yeah.
That, that, that is the project to get us?
It's the design work.
Well, that's a design, I'm saying that's a design, but then you.
And the funding is in the out-years there for the.
It's gonna cost that much to do that?
That's what the estimates are, the preliminary estimates are, yeah, because there's a lot of.
Oh, because of that stormwater pond.
Stormwater pond.
That's right.
It's in a, it's in a really difficult area environmentally to build a road.
But we've gotten, he signed off on that, and we're, okay, very good.
Next is Nichols Matter Ackerman Bridges for three million. Bridge maintenance for six hundred thousand, and Maryland Road for five hundred twenty-five thousand assessment funded. That's it for roads. Sewer, also on page one eighteen, capital equipment replacement, one hundred thousand. Then we jump down to systematic, systematic replacement of mechanical components, one hundred seventy-five. General Force Main Rehabilitation, one hundred thousand. Southern Kent Island Phase Three, three million. Southern Kent Island Phase Four Step, one million. Southern Kent Island Phase Four Community Means, one million. And Marling Farms Dominion Sewer Extension, seventy-five thousand. Return Activated Sludge Pumps Replacement, two hundred twenty-five. Sand Filters Rehab, one hundred. And KNSG Water Treatment Plant Removal, two hundred thousand. Total for sewers, five point nine seven five million. Finally, sanitary water on page one nineteen, capital equipment replacement of five hundred sixty-five thousand. Graysonville Water Treatment Plant Upgrade, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, and critical interconnections of one hundred thousand. Total for water is nine hundred ninety-four thousand. A lot of the items in the capital line item in the operating budget are in this line.
So that, critical connections, what is that for FY twenty-six and the five million?
The pipe between Cantonaires and Graysonville.
That's the other interconnection, the water line from the Cantonaires all the way to Graysonville.
That'll be the last leg.
And, but, does that require another tower, or no, another water tower?
No, in and of itself, no.
Okay.
Ice. I have one somewhere.
So.
But first, we gotta connect them together, that's a priority, because particularly the UN Farm Moose Ward, that plant cannot produce enough water on its own.
Right, that's what I figured, so. But by connecting, that'll bring the water?
Yep. We've got plenty of capacity.
They just need a tower for the pressure.
Yes.
And that, Marling Farms and Dominion, that six point five's gonna be enough to do that? How many, how many, do you know how many homes that is that we're, we're talking about? I mean, I just, I'm just using SKI as, as the.
It's a fraction of that. I think there's like two hundred Marling Farms and maybe a hundred, and then, last time I gave you numbers off the top of my head, it didn't work out very well, so we'll get back to you on that.
All right, no problem, I just, I mean, I'm sure you, you put those numbers in here for this.
Yes, I did. You see, we're wrapping up the ski work phase four, and we figured that that'd be the next.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Progression to go down to those two other areas that are public health concern regions of the county.
Wal card is how they get to the sewer plant from Dominion, or, and Marling Farms, you know, whether we can utilize anything along the way, or whether we have to go all the way to Pump Station Two, whether we have to upgrade Pump Station Two, there's a lot of unknowns. Whereas ski, we went straight to the plant, a new pipe, so.
Well, we'll talk about that later.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be nice if that NSA site, or whatever you wanna call it, is surplus, like we heard a rumor about, because that would be a nice avenue to bypass Route Eighteen.
I hadn't heard that being surplus, have you heard?
Yeah, I heard the same thing too, yeah, but then, who knows, the guys in the black suits show up, right?
Right, that's right. That concludes all the capital projects for FY twenty-five and some of the out-years as well. Any other comments or questions from anybody?
Appreciate what you guys do, man, you know, so. Guys is not.
And that could be a he, she, him or her, so, you know.
Right, Margie?
Right.
There you go, thank you.
And I believe we still have some cats down at the shelter, right?
Oh, just a few, yeah. We, we took in, between last Thursday afternoon and last Friday, we took in sixty-eight animals.
How many?
Sixty-eight.
All right.
Um, sixty-three of those, I'm sorry, sixty-two of those were cats and kittens.
Start giving five at a time to retirees. Going-away thing.
You're hired.
You're gonna need all the love you get, okay?
No, I don't want any cats, no, thank you.
You sure?
I'm positive. I have dogs, too, don't worry. No, 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 cats.
Yeah. That's true.
I was just gonna say thirty-five years, you're seven. Team, team, big winner.
Just a hair short.
Yeah, we're, we're a little busy at the moment, that's for sure.
Well, that was a challenging week for you guys, and I appreciate, especially on a holiday weekend like that, so.
Yeah, everyone chipped in, everybody came in on their day off, and, yeah, yeah. Big team effort, for sure.
Good, all right, thank you. That's all, I think that's all we have this evening, right? Jeff, Jeffrey, anything else you wanted to bring up? Commissioners, we have one more work session with outside agencies that is scheduled for next, next week. We have a, a fourth work session planned, but if you have any other departments you wanna invite in for any discussions, you can let us know and get those.
The outside agency one is when?
The next Thursday.
Yep, okay.
Got a game to?
Oh.
Sure?
I cleared my calendar.
Yep, our next work, next work session is, yeah, April eleventh, outside agency grants and capital budget. Any other capital budget items you wanna talk about, or make any adjustments, we can talk about that, that at that point. And then April sixteenth is number four, work session four, if you have any other county departments or sessions we wanna have with the overall budget for FY twenty-five.
That's your new.
Yes, and then Chesapeake College is April eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We're done?
That's all.
Take a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Are Jim giving you his hat?